Good morning. Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. Extremely loud. Good morning, everyone. It is, I believe, Wednesday, December 19th. It is 9:31 a.m. Welcome to this special meeting and the last meeting of the Gender Equity Safe Communities New Americans in Education Committee. I'm Councilmember Loretta Gonzalez, Chair of this committee. I'm joined by Councilmember Alex Peterson, who's a member of this committee. And I understand that Councilmember Lisa Herbold is working her way out to the table as well. Thank you so much for being here, Councilmember Peterson.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we have only one item on today's agenda. Before we dig into today's agenda, I'll go ahead and ask if there is any objection to adopting the agenda.
No.
Hearing no objection, today's agenda is adopted. Again, there is only one item on today's agenda. We will this morning continue discussion of Council Bill 119701, which we refer to as the Clean Campaigns Act. Lish Whitson from Council Central Staff will be joining us at the table today to walk us through issue identification of the legislation. Of course, last week, we had a regular meeting of this committee where we had a very robust discussion, hearing specifically from national subject matter experts in this area around campaign finance reform, from folks all the way out in DC to folks here locally. We welcomed folks to the table who were constitutional law scholars and who have been working on these issues for quite some time across the country, both at the federal level, state level, and local level. And we appreciate their willingness to travel from afar to join us and have a really good conversation that was, I found incredibly informative and that I hope my colleagues who are with me also found really informative. But we had an opportunity to walk through some questions that we all had from a constitutional law perspective related to this bill and this issue as a whole across the country, and really appreciated the opportunity to have that conversation last week. So this hearing today is on the -- it follows up on that conversation. And we've all had some time to continue to identify issues that we might want to raise for purposes of amendment or otherwise in this legislative process, and really excited about being able to do that this morning. Anything you'd like to add, Councilmember Peterson, before we get started?
No, thank you for that informative panel of experts last week. That was very helpful.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, so as usual, we will go ahead and hold our regular public comment period. There is no one signed up for public comment this morning, so we will not hear from anyone unless someone in the audience intended to sign up but forgot to do so. Okay, seeing no one rush to the microphone, we're going to go ahead and close out the public comment period. And Lish is joining us at the table now. And while he does so, I will ask V., who is clerking today's committee, to read the first agenda item into the record.
Agenda item one, Council Bill 119701, in ordinance related to elections, limiting independent expenditures by foreign influence corporations and contributions to independent expenditure committees and clarifying reporting requirements, amending sections 2.04, 010, 2.04, 0260, 2.04, 0270, 2.04, 0280, 2.04, 0360, and 2.04, 0370 of the Seattle Municipal Code, and adding a new section, 2.04, 0400, to the SMC for briefing and discussion.
Thank you, V., so much. All right, let's go ahead and do introductions. And then, Lish, I'm going to hand it over to you to walk us through your memorandum.
All right. Lish Whitson, Council Central Staff.
Sorry about that.
Testing. Is that a little better? Yeah.
Yeah. For the viewing audience, sorry about that. We were getting a lot of feedback in the audience. I'm not sure if that was projecting on Seattle Channel, but it seems to have been resolved. Lish.
Great. So I prepared a memo for today's meeting. If you have questions about any of the information in the memo, any of the tables or charts, I'm happy to pop over to the laptop to discuss those. But I was just going to talk to you off of notes this morning. As a reminder, Council Bill 119701, the Clean Campaigns Act, amends regulations related to campaigns and contributions, including contributions to independent expenditure committees, contributions from foreign influence corporations, and includes new rules regarding commercial advertising disclosure. The memo I prepared goes into detail regarding the current regulations, trends in campaign finance contributions, proposed legislation, and includes a few minor technical amendments. In addition, Councilmember Gonzalez has additional amendments that we'll talk about at the end of today's meeting. The purpose of the Clean Campaigns Act is to reduce corruption and the appearance of corruption, particularly quid pro quo corruption. Corruption can be illegal, but even the appearance of the possibility of corruption hurts the public's trust in both the election process and elected officials and their trust in elected officials' decision-making. And it's for those reasons that we have this bill in front of you. The 2019 election saw a spike in independent expenditures. As the city has reduced campaign contribution limits from $700 in 2011 to $250 in 2019 for the majority of candidates that qualified for Democracy Vouchers, independent expenditures rose from $135,000 in 2009 to $4.25 million in this last year's election, in this election. Approximately two-thirds of those independent expenditures were to one independent expenditure or PAC. But even without that PAC's contributions, all of the other independent expenditure committees still would have broken any records that we have in terms of independent expenditures.
So, Lish, on page three of your memo, you have a really informative table that comes from the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission. There it is.
Yeah.
So maybe you can run through this just to put a finer point on what you are highlighting for us in terms of the changes we've seen and how money gets into our local elections.
Yeah. So Seattle's campaign laws have been changing frequently as both citizen initiatives and council actions have changed how campaigns are run in the city. The biggest part of that was the introduction of the Democracy Voucher Program, which was a citizens initiative in 2015 and started with the 2017 campaign. As part of that initiative, maximum campaign contributions were reduced from $700 to $500. And candidates who choose to participate in the Democracy Voucher Program and qualify to receive Democracy Vouchers have a limit of $250. This table shows you how much was given, both in independent expenditures, so expenditures by political committees that are not tied or coordinated with a campaign. Those have risen from $135,000 in the 2009 election. It dropped in the next two elections and has been ramping up since then, up to $4.25 million this year. The Democracy Voucher Program has been successful in shifting contributions away from large-dollar contributions from individuals to individual residents of the city, giving small-dollar contributions to candidates. So approximately half of the contributions to candidates in 2019 were through the Democracy Voucher Program. And more than half in 2017 were through the Democracy Voucher Program. Because the Democracy Voucher Program includes -- the Democracy Voucher Program includes limits on the maximum amount that a participating candidate can spend. There are voluntary limits and one of the ways that you qualify to participate in the In 2019, most candidates were released from those limits because independent expenditures were, on behalf of their opponents, were high enough that it pushed them over the threshold, and the Ethics and Elections Commission released candidates from the limits. So in 2017, that was less the case. I think when you ran, your campaign was kept to that limit. But in 2019, almost all of the candidates were released from the limits.
Okay. Any questions, colleagues, about this chart in particular? Looks like we got it.
All right.
Thank you.
So the presence of these large independent expenditures undermines the intent of the Democracy Voucher Program by allowing for large contributions, much larger than the limits that Seattle voters put in place in 2015, and appears to be a way to go around the contribution limits that were set under the Honest Elections Initiative. Surveys have shown that large contributions, whether to individual candidates or to independent expenditure committees, result in cynicism and the appearance of corruption. Yesterday's impeachment vote was a reminder of the threat of foreign influence in campaigns. Federal law prohibits contributions from foreign persons, but foreign interests can acquire interest in a corporation and guide their contributions. We heard expert testimony at last week's meeting that as little as 1% of ownership of a corporation can have influence over a corporation's decisions on how they are run. Transparency in campaign spending is also a cornerstone of campaign finance law in Washington State. Washington State law and city regulations require commercial advertisers to keep information about political advertising during a campaign. Those rules date back to 1972 for Washington State, and Seattle's rules were put in place in 1977. Political advertisers outside of the campaign process are exempt from any disclosure requirements. So this bill attempts to address three issues. It limits independent expenditures to $5,000. This would limit only the top 5% of contributors. It would allow limited contributor committees, which would be defined as political committees that receive a large amount of small-dollar contributions, to contribute any amount to another independent expenditure committee. Second, it would prohibit foreign influence corporations from making contributions to independent expenditure committees. And third, it would require additional disclosure by commercial advertisers, including retaining records for political advertisements outside of the campaign cycle. Any questions about the bill?
And that's the bill as introduced that you just described? Any questions for Lish, colleagues? All right, let's dig into amendments.
All right. So the memo contains three minor amendments. Adds a finding of fact based on 2019 campaign finance data. It restores the definition of political advertising that in drafting the bill was inadvertently left out, and removes some random underlining in one section of the bill.
Any concerns about those technical amendments, colleagues?
No.
No, I had a note here about the advertising issue, so. Yeah. So, Lish, in terms of these technical amendments that you've listed in your bill, I would just -- I think you're hearing from the committee members that we'd like for you to move ahead with making those revisions accordingly.
Right. Councilmember Gonzalez has five more amendments that I'm going to walk through. The first one is, sorry, the most amount of work, maybe the least substantive, but it influences how we'll proceed today. It would split Council Bill 119701 into three separate bills that we would introduce on January 6th. The bills would cover contributions to independent expenditure committees. The second bill would cover prohibitions on contributions and independent expenditures by foreign influence corporations. And the third would increase requirements for reporting on commercial advertising.
So that would be one amendment.
It's not really an amendment, but just to use our current terminology, it's basically the committee today providing direction to me to prepare those bills and make sure that they're introduced for discussion in January.
So, colleagues, the goal here is even though Council Bill 119701, which contains all three of these components related to similar subjects, even though the bill ultimately at the end has a severability clause, we think that there's enough, or I think that there's enough difference between the three different components that it merits having us consider each bill, each issue in its own separate bill with its own bill title, which would require a reintroduction of all three bills in order for us to have a conversation about those at committee on January 7th. So it is accurate to say it's a pretty technical fix, but it will require Lish to put in some work over the next few days to make sure that it is ready for the clerk to have on the introduction referral calendar on January 6th.
I'm supportive of that.
Great. Okay, so, Lish, let's move forward with that one.
Amendment two relates to the limited contributor committee idea. And it would change the threshold for what's considered a limited contributor committee and would set limits on how much a limited contributor committee could contribute to another political committee or PAC. So in the current bill, the limit is set to relate to the limits that are set for qualifying to receive Democracy Vouchers. And that it means a number of contributions ranging from 150 to 600, depending on the race that the candidate is participating in, and a maximum limit of $500 per person. This set of amendments would reduce that. So a limited contributor committee would have to receive at least 100 contributions. Those contributions could be no more than $100 per contributor. And then there would be a maximum limit that any limited contributor committee could contribute to another political committee. That limit would be $10,000. So a limited -- so any individual, any person under the bills would be able to contribute $5,000 to an independent expenditure committee. A limited contributor committee would be able to contribute double that if they meet the definition and certify to the city that they meet that definition.
So just really quickly, the intent here is, I would describe it as, one, when I had conversations with the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission, they had flagged some initial concerns about being able to operationalize this piece with the different standards and then layering on top of that the Democracy Voucher Program qualification as well. So they flagged some concerns about whether or not they would be able to, or difficulties related to implementation of the way that I originally introduced the bill. The second thing I would say is that I am sensitive to and receptive to some of the remarks I heard from them during the hearing that I attended, where they indicated that they were afraid or concerned that the limited contributor committee exception, as originally drafted and introduced in the underlying bill, would or could potentially be an exception that swallowed the rule because anybody could qualify as a limited contributor committee and therefore be effectively exempt from the super PAC caps. So this reintroduces a cap on all independent expenditures, but it recognizes that there is a policy motivation to want to have a different level of a cap at the amount of $10,000 as opposed to $5,000 for those committees that are able to prove that they are truly a grassroots organization that is focusing on small-dollar donations from a large volume of people. Please, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. I like that it's the 100 persons and the $100 is consistent with the Democracy Voucher Program, which is well-established now. And I support the policy goal you're seeking here about the difference between the limited contributor committee and then other committees. Great.
I'm just, I'm a little confused. I thought the, as introduced, it was consistent with the Democracy Vouchers. Now it would be inconsistent with the standard. As introduced, the threshold was 150 persons for city council, 400 persons for at-large city council, and 600 for.
Mayoral.
Mayoral. And so I was actually going to ask a question about that as it relates to your statement that Ethics and Elections had concerns about administering it. I'm confused as to why it would be difficult to administer the same standard for this program as they currently are administering for the Democracy Voucher Program. And it seems to me it would be more difficult to administer a different standard for this program than what they are currently administering for the Democracy Voucher Program.
I don't have any additional information, unfortunately for you. I'm just repeating what I have heard from them.
Can I clarify? When I said "consistent," I meant that people are contributing $100 worth of Democracy Vouchers. That's what I meant.
Got it. These are different qualification standards. My belief is that what is being flagged is that there is sort of a double need, if you will, to have to verify not just qualification for the Democracy Voucher Program, which is a different rubric in terms of determining how you qualify for it, because it's the $10, and you have to sign the petition plus also give $10. And this is just basically a $100 check from 100 people within a particular calendar year, a certain set of months before. So even though the number is no longer, the number of contributions is no longer tied to qualifying to be an LCC, there's a lot of other criteria related to the Democracy Voucher that isn't incorporated in connection with the number of contributions. So I think this streamlines it while still meeting the ultimate goal of wanting to provide limited contributor committees with an opportunity to, or folks to qualify to be a limited contributor committee while still recognizing that we only want that available to entities that can show that they have a higher volume of donors as opposed to just three or four donors.
And it should be pointed out that any committee can still, under the bill, receive any number of contributions up to $5,000 and spend that themselves. These limited contributor committees are only for committees that want to contribute to another PAC. So, yeah.
So this is a PAC-to-PAC transfer?
Exactly.
You're referencing the added language in V.
Well, just the whole way that the limited contributor committee falls into the bill. It only matters if a PAC wants to contribute to another PAC.
I understand. And secondly, I would just say that the other, in terms of the second motivator, which is not wanting to create an exception that swallows the rule, I mean, really, at the end of the day, what we're talking about is wanting to make sure that we are addressing the appearance of corruption in our electoral system. And, you know, in utopia, I would hope that someday we can get all big money out of politics, regardless of what the source is. I think that this modification recognizes that even in the limited contributor committee context, it's still important for us to recognize that there is the potential for too much money or big money to get into that particular environment as well. And so applying a similar cap, although higher, is, I think, a wise policy choice to ensure that people aren't going to gain the limited contributor committee option as a way to circumvent the underlying policy goal of getting big money out of politics and addressing the appearance of corruption in our electoral system.
In terms of the enforceability question, on page two, there's an amendment to Section 204, 260, that requires the limited contributor committee to certify to the director of the Ethics and Elections Commission that they meet the qualifications. It puts the onus on the committee rather than on the commission in determining whether or not they have met those criteria.
Any other questions or concerns about this one?
I think I have to digest it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great. Not a problem. Okay. And just so we're clear in terms of process today, we are just doing a briefing and discussion. We're not voting. So my intent will be to have in the reintroduced bills an opportunity for us to incorporate some of these proposed changes in that base legislation, but still open to continuing to have conversation.
Amendment three is related to foreign influence corporations. The bill limits, or prohibits those foreign influence corporations from making contributions to independent expenditure committees. This amendment takes that logic and says that they also cannot contribute to a campaign.
So I think this is just consistent language. I would consider this to be, even though it's a substantive change, it's pretty technical. It just aligns the restriction on independent expenditures, well, transfers that proposed standard into a direct campaign and applies the same standard in the direct campaign context.
I do have a question about, I support this. My question's about the word "receive" here that's added, "shall." No candidate shall receive. I know a lot of, some of the candidates in this round would receive contributions and then return them, like I returned a bunch of contributions from any organization that I received. So how does a candidate prevent from, it's hard for them to prevent from the initial receipt of them, but as long as they return them?
So that's the existing language in the law. I can talk to our attorneys about whether a word like "accept" would be a better word. And if so, incorporate that into. And if so, incorporate that into the new bill.
Yeah, so that it's not just, so that a candidate and a campaign isn't inadvertently penalized by the simple act of receiving it as opposed to actually accepting it.
Right.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. Okay. Any other questions or feedback on that one? All right, moving along.
All right. So, our campaign finance regulations include a couple of different levels of enforcement. In terms of civil enforcement, there are two different levels. Any violation of the campaign finance regulations requires, or can lead to sanctions above to $5,000 per violation. Violations of illegal contributions can result also or instead in a penalty of requiring repayment of the illegal contribution and a penalty up to two times that illegal contribution. The current bill doesn't amend that section, and so that provision wouldn't apply to the new limits on contributions to independent expenditure committees. This amendment would apply that higher threshold, higher limit to independent expenditure committees.
Great. So, this just makes sure that we have the same penalties applicable to this, to any potential violations here in the civil context that would ordinarily apply in other illegal contribution sections. Any concerns there, colleagues? No? Okay, let's move that one forward.
And then, the last amendment is a set of findings of fact, and these will be split up into findings of fact that deal with independent expenditures, findings of fact that deal with foreign influence corporations, and findings of fact that deal with commercial advertising. I'm not going to walk through all of these because there's, I think, about 30 of them. But if you have any feedback on anything, if you see, if you can think of additional things that should be highlighted as reasons why we are adopting these regulations, then please let me know.
So, colleagues, these are recitals in the council bill that will effectively help to identify and explain the legislative intent behind why we are advancing this suite of bills. With the separation of the bills, I think we'll have to figure out where some of these live relative to the subject matter of each of the bills. But the intent here is to create a robust record through the recitals of the legislative intent and, you know, be able to cite to existing constitutional law and other principles related to Seattle's election experience in particular to support the policy positions that we're taking within the bills. This is not an exhaustive list. It is rather voluminous currently, but it is not exhaustive. My hope is that some of the materials that are referenced in the recitals will actually, the intent will be to distill those into a clerk file that will accompany the bills. So, we'll be working on developing that clerk file between now and the time there is passage of the final bills. And so, I welcome the addition of any material and references as you are doing your own independent research or asking Lish to assist you with that research so that we can continue to develop appropriately and robustly, develop the legislative record through the recital and the clerk file. Any comments or questions on this one?
I have a question.
Councilmember Peterson.
So, these are really strong recitals and very beneficial. And one of the questions I had was on subsection D. I didn't know if there was a way to expand that to say something like, you know, large, well-funded organizations, including but not limited to the real estate interests, technology companies, et cetera, just so we're sort of casting a wider net in terms of who we're talking about. So, should we make sure we include more groups there? But again, the included but not limited to language, and then we can zero in on those examples, but at least it's broader.
Yeah, I don't have an objection to that.
Isn't one of the benefits of the legislation on the limited contributor committees, aren't there additional disclosure requirements where we'll get more information about contributors than we currently get? So, no matter which type of organization setting up a limited contributor committee, we're getting a lot more information about the contributors?
I don't think that anything in this bill would change what needs to be disclosed in terms of contributors.
Okay, all right.
It would add transparency to understanding if it's going between one PAC to another PAC. It would add transparency in terms of which PAC is contributing to another PAC.
Okay, that is helpful.
But that's different than tell me who the contributors are to that PAC that is giving money to this PAC. So, the contributor disclosure requirements are not being amended. There are currently, in the current disclosure laws, rules around disclosure of who is contributing to campaigns, but this would add a layer around if, you know, XYZ PAC contributed to ABC PAC, it would require us to know, it would require disclosure of XYZ PAC giving to ABC PAC.
Right, that's very helpful.
But not require the underlying list of who contributed to the underlying PAC.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about these proposed amendments? I know you all are just digesting them. I apologize for not getting these to you sooner, colleagues. We had the law department assisting us in reviewing them and didn't get them back until late yesterday afternoon, and so apologize for not being able to get some of these. Some of them are pretty technical, but I understand and appreciate the need to digest some of the more substantive changes, particularly around the limited contributor committee. I think there will be enough time for us to digest that and have additional conversations between now and the next committee on January 7th to be able to continue to work through some of the more substantive changes I'm proposing.
That's making the bill stronger, so that's terrific.
Great. I just want to make sure everybody is comfortable with what will be required under the new framework should they be, should these amendments be adopted. It is a bit of a shift, and again, want to reiterate that the shift is really being motivated, particularly in the limited contributor committee setting, as wanting to make sure that I address some of the concerns that I've heard around not creating exceptions that will swallow the rule. And I think that reimposing a cap of $10,000 in terms of what can move between caps is a reasonable solution, policy solution to that particular concern. It still allows those grassroots organizations to be able to transfer a higher level of money amongst each other, but still recognizes that at the end of the day, the ultimate policy goal is to address the issue of big money getting into politics in a way that undermines the democracy voucher program, which I am a very huge fan of, having used it one time. And I think that it's really important for us to protect the integrity of that program. And table one that Lish walked through really did show us an example of how it's being undermined. And when we see that of the 14 candidates that were running, most of them, if not all of them, had to be exempted from or released from the caps under the democracy voucher program, I think that sends a very strong signal to me and to the public that the independent expenditure, the unfettered and unregulated environment of independent expenditures in the context of the democracy voucher program is damaging the integrity and the intent of publicly financed campaigns and the need to really focus on, you know, small donors and on what our constituents or prospective constituents want us to be emphasizing our campaigns on. So, I think that the limited contributor committee modifications as proposed will help us achieve all of that, but of course, happy to continue to have conversations about how to make sure to address ultimately that underlying intent. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Nothing. Thank you for your work on this. I look forward to, I want to talk to you two more about your amendments and moving this on to committee after the new year.
After the new year. So, just so we are all on the same page, we are obviously in transition as a city council. Will we be getting new leadership, new committees, new committee structure, et cetera, et cetera? Because this, because I would like for this bill to be considered one last time in committee and have it voted at a committee on January 7th, and we have our full council meeting on January 6th, where we'll actually be taking a vote to organize and how to organize ourselves as a city council. I've been working with the current council president's office around creation of a select committee now to be able to deal with just this bill. So, that'll provide us an opportunity to refer, have a committee, an actual functioning committee, to refer this bill to on January 6th. And then, on January 7th, we will have that select committee meeting. It will be a committee of the whole since it is a select committee. I, of course, am due on January 12th. I'm very hopeful that I will still be here on January 7th, but if I am not here, I have asked Councilmember Herbold, who has agreed to chair that meeting, in my stead, and I'm really grateful for you, for your volunteering to do so. Thank you so much. So, hopefully, I will still be here by January 7th to see this out of committee. If not, I know that it will be in good hands with Councilmember Herbold. And again, the goal will be for the full council to consider a bill as amended on Monday, January 13th. So, that is the procedural plan in terms of what we intend to do here. So, between now and January 6th, I'd like to make sure that Lish has all of the potential mandatory language to be able to incorporate into reintroduced base bills related to each one of these three topic areas. And would ask my colleagues to please make sure that they connect with Lish to get any additional issues identified or any tweaks to some of the amendments that I have put on the table today for discussion. If we can all get those to Lish sooner rather than later, that would be great. Okay?
We'll debate on this.
Yes. Lish, thank you so much for your work, and I know that you're going to have to carve out a little bit of time during council recess to be able to get this across the finish line and in close to final form for us to be able to reintroduce on the 6th. I really appreciate that effort and look forward to having continued conversations. If there is nothing else, we will be adjourned. Thank you so much.